Louder. Come on, put some muscle on.
You got everybody.
Oh, right. No, I'm waiting for the high sign.
Welcome to the March 7th, 2023 East Bridgewater School Committee Public Hearing on FY24 School Department's Budget. At this time, I take a motion to open our meeting.
So move.
Move by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming this evening. And thank you to our administrative team for all of your hard work in putting together our budget. And thank you to the Budget Subcommittee for all your time and effort. Thank you to the town for your support. There will be time at the end for questions as soon as the presentation is over. At this time, I'm going to hand this presentation over to Superintendent LaGo.
Thank you. Can you get a motion?
We got that.
She's been working on that all day. Good evening again. I want to thank everybody, especially our principals, our directors, J.F. Allen, Kate Burns, Bill Clements, Ron Taylor sitting in for him this evening, Matt Palcap from Mitchell School. We can't do this without you. We appreciate all the time and effort that you all put in. Jay, for all the work that you do, the special needs program. Dr. Williams, curriculum instruction, and just everything else wears the hat on a daily basis and puts a lot of work in to get these numbers correct. And of course, John Shea, who puts a lot of time and effort into making sure that the numbers work and making sure that we got everything put together. And again, thank you to the school committee, to our community of East Bridgewater. Also want to thank the town. We have worked closely the last few weeks with Mr. Selig. We have worked with the FinCom, and we will continue to work with them to make sure that we have a sustainable and reliable budget every year and that we can continue the services that we provide to our students each and every day. This year, what we have done is just I've made the, I tried to make with my team, a simple, easy story about East Bridgewater and our proposed budget for the 2024 fiscal year and school year for the East Bridgewater Public Schools. We're a pre-K through 12 school district. We have high-quality, inclusive instruction. From pre-K through 12, we have students with IEPs. We have students in general ed that are combined in all classes, in all schools. We provide direct instruction to all students at all times. We believe that students need direct instruction for math, social studies, science, and English with their peers. They will grow as a group, they will grow individually, and they'll grow with their teachers throughout the year in any discipline that we have: math, social studies, science, ELA, world languages. English language learners are inclusive in our school district. Technology, phys ed, health and wellness, music and band, fine arts. We have a CAD program and early college and alternative programs that you'll see in a few minutes. Our extracurricular activities, athletics, intramurals. We have drama, acceleration academies, little Vikings, before and aftercare, and numerous clubs. We must and continue to support what we have today and continue to grow tomorrow. So where are we today? The 2023 budget, we are $23,607,473. Our 2024 budget, which we are asking or requesting tonight, and so that we get a certified budget next week on Tuesday, and we were talking about this with the town, is 2024 budget is $25,245,009. It's an increase of $1,637,536 from 2023. The nice part of this whole budget, I guess, and maybe it was nice to see, is that our Chapter 70 increased this year again up to $673,367. Last year, we had a million-dollar increase, if you remember, going in from 2022 to 2023. This year, we weren't sure where we were going to end up with the new administration, but the new administration has said that they are going to continue to support public education. We saw that in our Chapter 70 funding, which is at $673,000, which helps us. The Chapter 70 funding that we get from the state and the Commonwealth is $12,873,317, and the town contribution for all of our community members, what we will come up with is be $12,371,692, which will be an increase from the following year of $1,637,536. Our budget drivers are salary, technology, transportation, external factors, voc ed, and special education. They drive the budget. Salary drives it. We need people. We need highly skilled people in all areas, regardless of the area that you're in. Certified or non-certified, we need them to be skilled. We provide professional development for everyone in this district. We have technology needs that are not only technology in the classroom from Chromebooks, but we also have technology for cybersecurity, which has been requested of us by Maya, our insurance company, that we need to improve our security on our network system for both the town and the schools. And if you saw or witnessed or read all over the paper, Whitman Hansen Regional School District last summer got hacked into, and they are still writing handwritten paychecks and handwritten checks to their vendors at this time. Mr. Shea and I even went over to Whitman Hansen, and they walked us through how they were taken over and what they had to do, and how do you get your technology back? People get our information, people get our students' information, we're in trouble. So we have to protect our kids, we have to protect you, and we have to protect the entire school district. And they don't really want a student's grades. What they want is they want to get into our financial system. So if they can hold you hostage for one, they'll hold you hostage for everything. So we are increasing our cybersecurity. We're also increasing our security on the outside with cameras. More cameras on all of our buildings. So you'll see a little bit of that in a moment. Our contractual obligations, and we have been fulfilling them, we will continue to fulfill them. In 2023, there were $19 million, almost $20 million, $19,901,973. For 2021, we're at $20,931,366, which is a change of $1,029,393. We need to support this. We need more teachers. We need more support staff. We need more custodians. We need more people, we need more hands on deck. We will continue to support SEL learning with adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, school psychologists, supports in the classroom, ELL teachers. We need more support for our English language learners. Five years ago, we were at 17 students. Today, we're almost at 60, and moving in that direction each day. We just had a family move in on Monday with three students, all English language learners. This is something that we will support. I hope that you support, and we'll continue to move forward. Non-salary. This is what your budget says. This is what we've done. In special education, about $2.5 million in 2023. In 2024, we're at $2,797,197, a change of $310,698. It's a 12.5% increase, and most of it is in out-of-district tuitions. Over the last four years, we have created a room in each one of our buildings, an ASD room that is now housing students every year from pre-K through 12. We continue to have, we add these rooms because we want these students to stay in our school district and not to send out of district. They want to be near their families, they want to be with their peers, they should be with their cohort, and they should be in East Bridgewater. Not every student do we have a program to support. There are some students, we do not have a program here in East Bridgewater, and we may need to go out of district for a collaborative or an out-of-district placement residential. Our technology went from $502,000 to $710,000, which was a change of $207,000, which is about 41.4%. Our cybersecurity, that was for cybersecurity Chromebooks. Transportation, that is on the town side. However, Mr. Shea and I do negotiate that contract. We have negotiated with Lucini. We went from $947.7 to $959.4, which is about $11,700 a year. This is the 1.2% increase from last year. This is, we are in our fifth year of our contract. We'll be negotiating next year, going out for bid. Our alternative education and early college and academies, we have a police academy. We're starting a police academy in the fall of 2023. Right now, we have a fire academy. Two students will graduate from that first academy that we started two years ago. They'll graduate in this class of 2023 with their EMT certificate, walk across the stage, and will be placed, Chief Herron will be there, and they will place these students in an academy outside of here so they can start in a district or a community, hopefully in East Bridgewater. Knock on wood that we need a new fire personnel in East Bridgewater and that we can keep our own here or somewhere close, nearby community. Our alternative education, we've been offering college courses for the last two years. We've got, we want to open that and expand that. We are working in a consortium with eight, nine other school districts in the South Shore. We were allotted $200,000 in a grant this year to create these academy, to create this program. Right now, we're offering sociology out of Massasoia. Students who are graded three credits that can be transferred into college upon graduation, which not only helps the student go into school, could be up to 12 credits or 18 credits by the time they graduate. We hope to be starting this in their late sophomore year, going into their junior year of school. And as they do this, it's good for the student to have credits going into college, but what else it does, it helps you in the pocket or our families to not have to pay for so much college in the first year. You don't want a bill. We want it to be affordable for every student. And if we can help and get some of those requirements out of the way, I think that that's what we're here for. And I know that's what we're here for. Our southeastern voc, and as you can see, the college credits, EMT, certified, traded police, early educator, we're going to start early educator academy in a year or so, along with the police and fire. That is for our teachers. Students are graduating from high school, they're not going into colleges, they're not going to college for teaching anymore. We're not graduating enough teachers to continue the network that we've always had in public education or private or in collaboratives. We're not, we don't have the personnel coming out of college for us to hire. So knock on wood, we have, we're full right now. We have some maternity leaves. We do have some, we have one area that has a full-time sub in it that has been like that for the, almost the entire year. However, we hope to fill those positions for the 2023, 2024 school year. Our principals yesterday are going to start hiring for the 2023, 2024 at the beginning of April. So hopefully, we will get the students that are graduating in May, they'll start to interview, and we hope to get the best of the best and the brightest that are coming out of schools. And southeastern voc tech, that is on the town budget side, we're estimating that to be an increase of $140,000 this year. We support those students. We support southeastern voc. They offer a program that we do not offer here, and if those, and if our, and if we have students that want those types of programs, plumbing, HVAC, construction, in those areas that we can't provide, then yes, we support that and we want them to go there. We don't want to say no that you can't. We also support students going to North Oak Aggie and Bristol County, and most of, I think it's, we have one, two in North Oak. Haven't seen any more come through yet. But that's where we at on our non-salary. Didn't see you behind me. I thought I was looking at your mom. External factors. Our increase in Chapter 70 funding is directly correlated to the following factors: our hospitalizations, our low-income students, homeless, foster care students, students with English as a second language, added access classrooms at the Central School, Gordon Mitchell, and the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. As I just said, we've been adding them over the last few years, and we had an unfunded mandated student placement. These increases are on a daily basis from our school in our district to every other district that I have come in contact with. We have increased hospitalizations with students. We have higher income, we have a higher rate of lower-income students. We have homelessness, we have foster care children. We have students with English as a second language. Our ELL population is growing. There's no doubt in my mind that we will grow over the summer. We'll be adding more access classrooms. And we did have a student that was placed by DCF in a residential placement. We don't have any say in that, nor can we, nor do we know where the placement is, but we know that that child belongs to us. It is an East Bridgewater student, and we will support them, and we will, we will take half of that. We pay half of their residential, and the state pays the other half. But that was something that we did not see coming, we did not know about at the time, and we were, this is what we deal with. We don't know if a child, if a student's going to come to school and have, and have any type of social, emotional thought process of hurting themselves on a daily basis. We've had hospitalizations over the last couple of weeks. We had three in one week, we've had four in one week, where students have come to us voluntarily or their friends have and said, "I think my friend's going to hurt themselves," or they say it themselves, and we are, we have to report that. We do the best that we can. We contact the parents, and sometimes we do have to transport for their safety. We need to support all of our students regardless of the needs. That's part of our budget. They are external factors, and they're increasing on a daily basis. Our district's expenditures. Salary takes most of the budget, special ed is second, vocational is third, transportation and technology. It's all part of the pie. We have three, about 350 employees that work for East Bridgewater. We could probably need 450 employees to work for East Bridgewater, and we would need more. We need more hands on deck, I would say that. But we can't have everything, and what we do have, we do great things with. Our capital project update in 2023. All of the capital projects that we asked for and that were approved have been completed. The Mitchell School driveway and parking lot, you see on the left, down in the left-hand corner, parking lot was a mess. They came in, did a great job. Driveway looks terrific down there. It just really makes that building look terrific. We bought two passenger vans. They've just been registered, they've just been insured. We bought them in, a little bit after January. We bought two of them for $30,000. By next week, we hope to send them out and start getting them printed, so East Bridgewater Public Schools on them. We have already, some of our faculty and staff has started getting their 7D licenses. They're all going to start to take students out that are in these ASD classrooms for trips on transitional programming, occupational programming, go out maybe to work, job placements. They're working with Mr. Phalen on that. But this is going to be, this will add a lot to the programming in special ed, but also we'll be able to cut down on some of the expenses of our athletic programs or in our drama or band programs with small groups going out to athletic events or a band trip. We'll be able to take the small vans, which will help us in alleviating some of the costs. We had to buy a new dishwasher. People don't think it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. About $50,000. And then we had to bring in electricians and plumbers and try to get everybody to come in all at the same time, and then you have to get somebody to come in and teach you how to work it. It takes a little bit of time, but it's there. And if you, you probably won't walk through there, but I could tell you it looks a lot better in that room when I walk through there. Another capital, some more capital, is that the Central School driveway, it was an, we did it for safety and emergency. If you've ever been around Central School at 8:45, between 8:30 and 8:45, it's back-to-back all the way up Central Street into the parking lot, down and back, and buses are going out one way and then coming in. If we ever, if we ever had an emergency situation, we could not get ambulances and fire trucks in there quick enough or even police. We opened that up, so one lane is for to get in and out, and the other lane stays free, if you can see it, the fire lane on the other side, so fire and ambulance and police can get in and out of there. We haven't had any issues this year, Mrs. Byrne, knock on wood. Nobody tries to pass anybody because Mrs. Byrne has given out the directions right at the beginning, so nobody cuts anybody off. But it has been a great addition, and it looks really nice. They really did a great job on that. The dust collector, we relocated it from one side of the building at the high school to another side because of where it was located. There was not a wood shop in that area, so it really wasn't collecting the dust that it should have been. So it was really just sitting there and not doing what it was supposed to be doing and getting all of the dust that it was supposed to be, because most of the work that was collecting the dust is in from, I think it's called Wood Fabrication Classroom. So we moved that. That was an expense. People don't think it's an expense just to pick, I'm sorry, pick something up, pick something up and move it, but it took a little, it took them a couple of days, then put it back together and move it and get it all set up. But that looks terrific. And then the cafeteria pos system for the district, the new cafeteria. Yeah. What do you want? So I've lost it in my head, but.
Point of sale.
Point of sale. We had to get these, not only do they help our own food director, but they also, we have information for the state on it. So we had to get these, and it took a little bit of time getting them all set up and all of them to work and to get all of the systems talking to each other. But now that they're there, it's helped us out quite a bit. Capital request for 2024. We're going up tomorrow night, six, to request, six o'clock tomorrow. Like the box truck replacement, it's about $73,000. Outdoor, and that's to transport food back and forth to buildings. We also, in the summer, we move a lot of equipment. We are working with our food director on trying to help a little bit on the box replacement or truck replacement. Outdoor security camera replacements, those are at all the buildings, but Mitchell School in particular. Technology upgrades, cybersecurity. And we are going to just talk about the stadium, the turf field replacement. It's a big number. A lot of people use our stadium, our own football team, youth football, lacrosse, track and field is out there a lot. We have a lot of people that want to rent our field, and we do rent it out. We need to upkeep. We need to continue to maintain our fields, our buildings, our own properties so that they're sustainable and it's not just a big number all the time. I know it sounds, that it's new, that this building is only 11 years old, so that stadium and that turf field is 11 years old, but it needs some replacement, and it needs to be replaced. So we're looking forward. Some things that we're going to do and that we, we know that we have to do is supporting instruction by adding an RTI instructional coach using school choice funds supported by our school committee. As much as I want to put this in our budget, and as much as I want everybody, as much as I want to keep this in our budget, I know that at this time, getting, getting another coach would be hard to get into our operational budget. So we talked to the school committee about putting in a coach to help teachers, to support and strengthen their instructional strategies, to continue to work with our teachers, to support them, and how to support students and their learning. Professional growth. Instructional coaches provide direct impact to teachers, data-driven, decision-making, universally designed, lesson planning, responsiveness to students' intervention needs. Personalized support. Veteran teachers and new teachers have different needs, yet all need to be supported. Closing the achievement gap. When the barriers to learning are broken down, all students achieve to their fullest potential. One of the things that we know is maybe a new teacher has 22 students in their classroom. Not everybody learns at the same rate or the same pace. Some students move ahead, some students rain on target, some students need extra support, some students are quieter than others, some are less movers than others. With an instructional coach, we can support that teacher and offer them the supports needed and the professional development to gain the confidence in themselves and to gain the repertoire that they need to continue to support students' needs. We believe, the principals believe that this, Dr. Williams wants to join in, but we believe that this is a much-needed position in the district. So much that the school committee has supported that and is going to push this forward. This may be one of our own teachers that is here, that we pull into that and then hire a younger teacher, it may, or a new teacher coming out of college. It may be someone that we bring in that wants a new position in a new district, but this is something we are going to support because it's needed. We also believe with our RTI model and the three-tiered approach, and tier one and tier two, and before a student goes on and maybe to team and maybe to get an IEP or 504, moving in that direction, we think that we, we help support students and we help support their interventions and their needs, that we can control that a little bit, that we can help them earlier, that we can find out what interventions does the student need earlier and maybe help them earlier. And with this coach and the other, and the other facilitators and the lead teachers that we have go, that are working with us now, an added person can support the needs. They all go together. Professional growth, personalized support, and closing the achievement gap. It's not a one-way ticket. Each one is connected, each one is important. Each one comes together and supports the child. Central Elementary School, this is looking ahead. Is it renovation project or is it new construction? We are, we are in the queue. Our timeline begins and starts April 2nd. Mrs. Byrne and I are working on the, on the informational sheet right now. We'll be going out with a letter. We've already asked some teachers to be on. Mrs. Byrne has talked to her PTO. She's spoken to her teachers. We'll be sending a letter to the community. If you'd like to be on a building project or the Central School building or renovation project, we ask that you come forward, sign up, as we said when we sent out the signup sheet, so you can be part of this process. It's not an easy process. It's not gonna be completed next year. Whether it's renovation or whether it's a new build, there's a lot to go, a lot to go forward with this. There has to become first is a feasibility study, and if the town is willing, if the community partners and the town of our community partners, are they willing to go forward with a, a building project or renovation? Feasibility, we'll go through a feasibility study. Once we get through the feasibility study, that's when we'll know where we're at. And what, what the state thinks that they'll allot for us, and what they think, the feasibility and the architects think we should do. Right now, the reimbursement rate is at 57.25%. I will tell you that at the meeting that I was at the other day, most elementary schools are looking around about $90 to $120 million. The, but if you don't, if we don't work on Central School, we're in trouble. It's a daily occurrence that there's an issue with electrical, with the plumbing, with the heat. It's a beautiful school, but it's beautiful because of what goes on inside. The people in it, and the students in it, and that we support it, but it needs help. The Gordon Mitchell School, we're gonna need a new roof. We've been saying it, and I know that our facilities director, Brian Kylie, will bring it up in his report as well. We're gonna need a new roof on the Mitchell School. We also need a new boiler system. What comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do we do a boiler system first, or do we do a new roof? We know that we did a boiler system at the Mitchell, at the Central School. What are we gonna do here? No, I think it's going from steam. They wanna take one boiler down. We've got two there. They're gonna take one off and put it over here. That's not, I don't know that. We have to bring in experts. They're gonna tell us how much it's gonna cost them. Once we get that, we'll let you know, but we've got leaks all over the place, and barrels in the hallways up and down, in the auditorium and all over. Mr. Parkett was your first year here. You had barrels all over the place. So that's, we don't need to do that to our kids, to our teachers, to anybody. So those are things that need to get done, and we need some maintenance here at the high school. I know it is a brand-new building, and people keep saying to us, why do we continue to work on the building? The HVAC controls need to be switched. The computer system is not, it's old now. It's 11, 11 years old, and they're saying it's old. That it doesn't, can't even find some of the, the switches and the controls that work, the computer system. And a new track that goes around that turf field. Again, what comes first? But if we don't maintain what we have, we're gonna lose them. It's just like your house. If you don't maintain it, you're gonna have problems and issues. Mrs. Byrne, I had all the principals send up a quote. Mrs. Byrne started with the 2023-2024 budget. Proposal allows us to continue in our efforts to accelerate student learning. It preserves our RTI model, which provides essential services and instructional support for our classroom teachers and students. Mr. Parkett, at Mitchell, we invest ourselves deeply in the intellectual, emotional, and social well-being of students. We invest ourselves daily in the merit of our assessments, the value of curriculum, and the worth of our instruction. We invest fully in the worth and value of each and every one of our students and in the high level of their education. We've invested in it, we maintain it, and now we need this budget to sustain it. Mr. Clements adds, "We remain incredibly proud of the work that is done by each and every staff member at East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. Every single adult walks through our doors each morning with the same goal, to do all that they can to support our students' education, growth, and development. Approving this budget reinforces the message. It is the town supporting our educators and in turn, supporting our students." Our issues are our issues. We can overcome them as we work together. If you go to the next, next page, I just wanna let everybody know that this will be put up this evening by 8 o'clock. This will be on our front page of our website. You can look at the presentation, and then you can go to our reference sheet, click on it. You're gonna budget by account. You can click on it. You can see Mr. Shea's details behind each of the line items. These are details. There's nothing that we're doing that you can't see. We also, we also put up the district report card. If you go down, and I'll just take out one. If you wanted to go to, how do our students perform on state tests? Where are we, was our district in the state? And you could push mathematics, grade 10. Can you see it on yours? Can you see how we perform against the state? How we're doing? What we recognize, where our supports need to go, how we need to support, what we need to do. So I tried to make this as easy and as light as possible, so that you can go through, see the presentation. Also be able to go and click on reference sheets and go and look at Mr. Shea's detail, so that you can see those. Also go to the district report card. If you have any questions, we'll take them now. If you have questions that you'd rather wait or send us an email, you'll be getting that information in a few minutes. Coming out, apparent square messages coming out. To go to everyone, you can send the messages directly to Mike tomorrow, and they'll go to Mr. Shea, Jay Phelan, or Dr. Williams, or myself immediately to get your answers. Or if you, the principals are here, if you have a question for any of the principals, they'll be willing to answer those questions. But I ask the questions come to my office first, so that we can give them to the right person at the right time. We have, we have some issues. We're informed about them. We know about them. We're working on them, but we're working as a team. This is not a one-person effort. It's not a two-person. It's not a one-building. It's not a two-building. It's an entire district. We also work with, we're, we're, we sit on the board of two collaboratives, but we work with five collaboratives. But we sit at North River Collaborative. We also sit on the Reed's Collaborative. But we also have students at Pilgrim Collaborative. We're adjusting the way we teach and instruct. We're adjusting how we do things at public education. I started in 1992. It's not 1992. We have different issues. COVID is not the reason that kids are having a tough time. It's a factor, and it just opened up the floodgates for us to see it deeply. We need teachers. We need support staff. We need people to do the jobs that we're doing every day, but for the needs of our students. So we do need more adjustment counselors. We do need more hands-on. And we hope that the support, that we believe that the support will come from the community, and we believe the support will come from the town. We certainly believe the support will come from each and every one of our parents. And I thank you, Ellen, or if there's any questions.
Couple of questions. So one of them on the teacher supports. What does the union do on that? Do they provide it, you know, like when I hire a union plumber, a union electrician, they pretty much guarantee that the guys, the women are gonna come and they're gonna do their job. Does the teachers' union do the same thing?
I believe so. They, we, we have constant conversation. We have a good, we have a good rapport with our union. We continue to hash things out. If there is a grievance, we talk about it. We get through it. I understand what you're saying. We offer, we have a commitment to our teachers, and they have a commitment to us. We work very hard on memorandums of understandings and, and to work on to make sure that we get everything we can get from a teacher, but we also offer them the professional development that we would like to see in the classroom as well. Is there a guarantee? Yeah, I think that teachers want, I don't think anybody comes in here to be a bad teacher. I think they're all great, and they wanna be better. And I think both, I think from Dr. Williams' office, my, my own office, and the principals, you know, we, we strive at providing the professional development and the support that they need. Not everybody's gonna be perfect. Not everybody's gonna be the best teacher on the first day. But I can tell you, I have seen tremendous growth over this year with some of the young teachers, or many of the young teachers that we hired in the fall. I, I told Kate Byrne, I was extremely delighted the other day as I walked through her building and saw a few classrooms and saw the growth. I even mentioned it to Dr. Williams. She was doing a walk-through, went over there the other day and said the same thing. We're seeing. Mitchell School, what a difference. Having the inclusion, having all students in the classroom with inclusion teachers, support staff, and the, the, the regular ed teacher in the classroom, all of them in the classroom working together, working on lesson plans together, has made a difference. I hope that we see that on the iReady report coming. I hope I see it on MCAS. I hope I see it in the overall student, in the growth and the maturity of the student. The confidence in the student to be able to come to school every day, to interact every day. So yes, I do believe that they're part of that.
So one other question. So you mentioned a lot of challenges, right? A lot of things you'd like to do, but, you know, limited. So do you have a budget or something that would show like, look, you know, this is what you really need to do this right? Do you have that? Do you guys calculate that out, or is that not part of the budget?
Yeah, I, I mean, we talk about it. We would love to have, you know, all the money to do everything. Yeah. Could I come up with a number for that? We probably could. But by no means are we, I don't believe that we don't, do we always, we need more people. We always need more people, and you always need more support. And I would love to be able to say it's an open-ended checkbook, and if we need this, go and get it. If you need that, get it. And if we wanna offer all of the languages, and if we wanna offer all of these math and science and tech programs, and if we wanna have, you know, helicopter pad, that would be great, so that we can take you out to do some, you know, oceanography and, you know, get out there. I would love that. But I think what we've done is we continue to create a budget that this town can afford and that our town can sustain, and it's reliable. I don't wanna, I don't wanna outsort, I do not want to out-budget ourselves and then put us in a hole that we cannot do our obligations to contracts, have our obligations to our vendors, and to make sure that we have obligations, to make sure we have the best instructional, instructional supports in the classroom. That's our number-one focus. And I think that we're get, I, I don't think we're getting there. I know that we're getting there. We've, we've made great strides. Central School is, maybe, is right now up in front. That school needs help. And it's not the inside. It's not the people. It's not the kids. It's the structure. A, a school is not the structure. A school is people on the inside. It's a wonderful school. It needs help. It's gonna cost money. We've gotta decide what we wanna do and how we wanna do it. But we also have a track and field and a football stadium out here that needs some work. We also have a softball field that is unplayable because it gets flooded and it just can't drain properly, for whatever reason. But we're, we're, we, I, I will say this. Between the town and the schools and the relationship, we continue to tick away at many of the problems that we have. We opened up a driveway. We did the driveway. We, we've moved, you know, a sawdust collector. We've, we've done, we, we continue, you know, we continue to do little things.
Just ask if you have to.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, all the money in the world, yeah.
No, but I mean, realistic, like, you know, if we have an extra, whatever, 50%, 40%.
Yeah. If we add an extra, if we add an extra $2 million today.
That would solve the problems?
It wouldn't solve the problems because they'll be added on every year, but I could probably come up with a better number. John could probably come up with a better number in a day or so and say, yeah, for $30 million, if we get a $25 million budget saved for $30 million, we could probably do a lot.
Right, that sounds good.
Yes. And create more programs, yes, but with, with, with programs come a person to get those programs going, so. So I thank you. I hope the people at home, or if you watch it tomorrow, or whenever you watch it, if you have any questions, please call us, please email us, and this will be up online on our website right after this meeting, 8 o'clock. Thank you.
Does anyone on the school committee have any questions? Anyone else have any questions before we wrap this up? No? At this time, I would take a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So move.
Move by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.